We're going to call this regular city council meeting in order. And then we start to comply with 2025 and we decide very PM. Let the record show, uh, we have President Dave, uh, Councilman Salvaglia, Councilman Graham, and Councilman Roman. At this time, we're going to have an invocation from Councilman Roman and a certain witness, Councilman Salvaglia.
The just of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have a couple of minutes. Just remind everybody that please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, please state your name for a record. And also remind everyone that we cannot respond to any comments that were made. We just take a big moment to silence. I'll let the record show the Councilman for you. Any public comments at this time?
Honorable Mayor, Madam Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Austin Martinez, and I reside at eleven ten East Second Street. At the end of the town, if you might say. I have distributed a small form before you, and it is about, it is to your left, uh, Mr. And these are the questions, basically because this is what is in the news. The horrific, uh, events that happened in Carconia especially. But what I'd like to know was this city has a emergency manager. And how do we get a hold of it? And who is it? And number two, what are the systems used to alert the population of an emergency? Where are the sirens located? I do know, and I've seen it, one up there by the park. Is there another one? Do you have another system to alert us? Say text or something like the alert systems on abductions? You might consider that. Now, I'm going to also talk about the drains. The main drains and all the water flows eastward. In the city mainly, it goes down Second Street, Seventh Street, and the location up there between Wendy's and United. Somebody has got to look at the permits that have been handed out. Because as you know, we had a small rain here far back, and all that area around Wendy's across the street flooded. They put drains, you could see, but the drains didn't do their job. The water went over the drains and it ponded above the drains. Now, at East Second Street and Third Street, there are two main drains. And they go under Old Highway eighty. Now, if the city keeps those clean, it'll work. But now, because of the some, the rains and the growth, they've cropped up. I've seen them where the, the water has backed up substantially, then it comes back all the way up to the tenth plot of Second Street. So I think what I'm basically saying, Honorable, Honorable Madam Mayor and Councilman, are we prepared for what could come? It could happen here too. Pecos has had floods before. Mainly, they come, uh, they hit the north side of the tracks. But on the east side, toes to where the city limits are, there is an opening on the railroad tracks. There's a bridge, and the water comes in through there, goes down those two drains that I mentioned. But we need to be alert. We need to know who is in charge of the management or alerting the population. Thank you.
We will close the summit and go on to our consecutive agenda. Upgrade the minutes of the June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, regular municipal meeting. Review the expenditure report, the second quarter quarterly code enforcement update, and the second quarterly, or second quarterly post Pecos proud update. I had one question about the Pecos drain. Why did June pose drawbacks on lunch? I mean, we went from twenty-four thousand pounds to six hundred and eighty pounds.
So in May, the twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty pounds was primarily from that one corner up on I twenty at that huge drainage culvert that we cleaned out. And June, staff is taking vacations, so we don't have as many available.
A big difference.
It's a big difference, yeah. That just means they're making strides, okay? Let's try to flick. Illegal dumping is happening throughout this city. Uh, we get notified by the landfill when they run into illegal products placed into the dumpsters. We go out and notify, uh, investigate it, attempt to identify if we can who placed it, and then notify the perpetrator, if you will. Uh, but they, it's literally all over the city.
Is it like construction materials?
It could be anything from appliances, tires, uh, construction materials, um, recliners, couches, just, uh, to name a few. So, um, everyone that we investigate, we do, um, if we're able to identify who did it, uh, they are made to take care of it right then and there, actually. So it's u- it's usually in the dumpster or around the dumpster area? Where they've leaned mattresses, couches up against the dumpster itself? Not necessarily the rounds, though. It's primarily our large three yarders. That was one of the selling points back in a couple of years ago. Yes. Yes, if we catch them, um, if they, if we're able to make, if we're able to identify who they are, we give them that moment right there to go out and actually address it. If we're able to identify them and they're not on site, we leave a twenty-four hour notice. If the material is still not removed, it's a notice violation.
Do they get fined for it?
Yes, a notice violation is a class C misdemeanor, and the judge actually sets the fine. So it would be five hundred dollars or less. Yes. On illegal dumping, it needs to be removed immediately. Uh, they don't get the benefit of the ten day notice, anything like that.
I saw in the, from January to June, we have eleven violations of RBC legal connections, and then we have sixteen cases from April to June. But we are, I know we're dealing with the RV appliance issues that, that are encountered. And, uh, so are these folks getting citation for it?
So they're given a notice to disconnect. Usually, they're either on a property with, on a property on the unapproved, unapproved surface, or they're possibly connected to water and/or sewer. Uh, they are told to disconnect immediately. And we bring it to their attention that they can have the RV there, they can have it plugged into a electrical. It has to be on a proper surface, but it cannot be lived in or connected to our water source. If we find that, pardon?
The other thing I saw, there's a lot of, uh, wheat, and especially, and I think Councilman Roman brought it up before, right there, by Wendy's behind, uh, what is that? Uh, United, United and all that. That whole deal is full of weeds. Who's responsible for that? Others for them.
So there is the private property, once you get off of Lincoln and you go into right past, uh, going west past Burger King, that is all considered private property, but we do have the right of way there. So as a matter of fact, I just met with our Pecos proud supervisor to discuss how we're going to verify that we are actually supposed to be removing this debris. Some of the areas, we have a right of way in two eighty-five by Wendy's, you know, we have that right of way as well. Um, and then United further back falls under United.
Okay, so if United's responsible for cleaning it up, if they don't clean it, let's get them too. Because it looks bad. If there's smoke trails there and then, I'll let you look out the window, all they see is a bunch of weeds.
Right.
And then there's constructions around that they get out of.
Yes, sir.
I don't like that. Or we're going to clean up this town, I don't care who they are, uh, big boys, they, they can pay their fines too and, and clean up their rent. But, you know, we're trying to clean Pecos, and that's why we have this, this group of, of guys that do it, and they do a good job, but they can't do it all.
That's true. And we're looking at, in our new budget here, increasing that, that team because we're adding these different zones. We need more coverage, more consistent coverage. We get down two eighty-five, by the time we get to seventeen, we've got wind. Now we've had the rain with the heat. The weeds here, um, are just different. We had a guy from Illinois thought they were little trees. You know, he was like, he was wanting to, he's like, I need to go get some of those, those grow really fast. It's like, that's actually a weed that turns into a double weed eventually, but, yeah. And so right now, we're going to be literally fighting that more so. Yes. We, and we're working with, um, the cleanup crew with the landfill is addressing some drainage ditches that we normally clear on the north side, out on A and B Street. Primarily B Street, I believe. The Sossido property? Yes, sir. I agree. Yes, sir. We are, um, reevaluating with code on making sure that we are prioritizing our main thoroughfares that are visible to a lot of our traveling public. Uh, those are, we're working our way back from these main thoroughfares, uh, to address that, but, yes, yeah. So the mosquito spray, spraying was normally managed through the landfill and the cleanup crew. I believe it still continues to, I'll let Pete speak to that, but I believe this, uh...
Yes, we started today. We'll start spraying today.
Mayor, Council, Lisa Terango, Chief of Police. Um, what you'll see before you, um, Christine Wright, our animal control supervisor, she's providing me with a little bit of information on animal control, and she was going to go through the numbers just to let you know the success of the spay and neuter clinic, and probably, um, plans for the future to have it again.
Mayor, Council, first of all, thank you very much for the spay and neuter clinic. It was a major success. Um, we asked to, for the funds for sixty animals, and we ended up seeing a hundred and seven total pets. We asked for the funds for 60 animals, and we ended up seeing 107 total pets. Of course, it did cost more money, so there was some fundraising involved, but we were able to treat every, every animal that came in. The vet team actually did an eye extraction for an infected eye socket, so anything the community needed was seen that day for that same price. So that was really amazing. Seventy total pets received vaccinations, spay or neuter, whatever they needed. Fifty-eight were microchipped, which I was really excited about because we've been microchipping, so almost half the animals that come through were already microchipped. So that was really good. We had 18 on the waiting list. Five of those have already been seen, and the other 13 are being scheduled, so we're gonna be able to do all of those. The importance of the clinic is that it costs us about $240 an animal to have them spayed, neutered, vaccines, dewormed, flea and tick treatment, the whole works, so that they can leave our shelter. The importance of these clinics is to stop them from coming in, first of all, but we're paying $50 for a $240 service. So we do plan to have another one. The vet team from Austin has agreed to come back in the fall, which we are going to ask, we'll present that to the county and ask that they do the same, since we did see some county animals. The majority were city limits animals. So we had a few from Belmeray, from Saragosa, Paiote, so there were, there were several from around the area, which do sometimes end up being Pecos animals at the end of the day. But that leads to less animals, hopefully, in the future that we do have to see. So it just works out good for everybody. Thank you. We are now a no-kill shelter, so.
I'm sure you all have read the email where it shows she's been recognized for 12 straight months of being below or at 91% live release.
It's the first time to go 12 months, so we're recognized internationally for that, so it's pretty exciting. She's in the corner. She did. She really did, and, you know, of course, Chief standing behind us for years and pushing for everything we're doing. Mr. Lino, and he's, he's helped long before he was city manager. His family even comes out to the El Paso airport to unload walk dogs and get them onto the aircraft so that I don't have to go all the way to El Paso now. So we're making connections across the state. She's been there the whole time. She's my little mini-me.
So really, Kristy operates as a one-person show and has, every so often throughout the years, just by herself. We're glad to say on Monday, God willing, we have a new animal controller that'll be starting on Monday. And then we have two other applicants that are finishing up the background, so we at least have a spot for one more. And we'll see, because both are really good candidates, we'll see how that plays out, and if not, maybe they'll work in the jail.
Crates, travel crates, the plastic travel crates. We, we spend a lot of money on those, and the reason is, we don't always get them back. If the animal is coming to us, we're gonna put it in a transport van, send it to meet another transport van. They're gonna put it on an airplane, it's gonna fly across the state. From there, it's getting in another transport van, so the crate stays with that animal most of the time. So that way, it's not too much stress, it's something familiar, they don't have to get it out every single time, and it interacts with everybody, and it, you know, just makes it a safer situation for the crate to stay with the animal. Yes, yes, we can always use those. Leashes walk away, and people that come back to claim their animals, which is happening a lot, male that we're microchipping more, sometimes they just don't think to bring a leash, and some have never even bought a leash. So that fosters communication and community, just a community engagement, like, hey, you know what? We can send you with a leash, this is when you should use it. And, and we can talk to them about a lot of other important things when they're there over that leash. So it's worth, while letting that leash walk out the door. We actually do have sweaters. Yes. Yes, any, we have a really good working relationship with Tractor Supply when they change their lineups, United, if they have torn bags that they can't resell. We do have a budget for food, but we're able to buy vaccines a lot now with that, since we're getting so many donations. So the way they put our, our budget line item is everything's kinda in one, so that it's what we need right now. Because we've never done this before, so it's all a pilot program, basically, and we're seeing what works best. No, Walmart was giving theirs to the Christian home for a while, and then, because, you know, a lot of people that are struggling, if they're struggling personally, their animals are suffering, so a lot of times, we don't think about those things going hand in hand. And now, I believe theirs is going to Grand Companions for their pet food pantry. So it's... I think there's, I think it's going to Grand Companions now, but a lot of the rest use do have pet food pantries, and people do call us if, like, hey, you know, I don't get paid this week, I need a bag of dog food. And we're able to do that through all the donated food items.
Without having it in front of me, I don't...
I don't remember.
But it is something that's budgeted yearly as far as animal foods or supplies, and like Kristy said, the donations that she gets and that she's able to obtain, it's, very rarely does she even have to dip into that, but when she does, we know, like, okay, we're in, end of a budget year, or into the winter at times when we have to get some of that stuff. A lot of the stuff that's in our budget includes the spray that she has to use inside the facility just to combat any type of animal illness, rabies. That's probably the most expensive chemical that we use, is what goes in there to clean that shelter and wants to.
The ones that we work with are One Tel at a Time West Texas, One Tel at a Time Portland, Oregon, One Tel at a Time Chicago, the Animal Adoption Center in Jackson, Wyoming, Street Dog Hero, Boise, Idaho Bully Breed Rescue, and Boise, Idaho Black Dog Rescue. Those are some of our main ones that, that we transport to. Austin Pets Alive is a hub that we use for anything flying to the northeast, goes through Austin. Anything flying to the Pacific Northwest goes through El Paso. So it's a pretty extensive network of partners.
And a lot of times, it's animal breed specific, so she's had to look at, like, Sharays or the...
Texas Cattle Dog Rescue.
German Shorthaired Pointer Rescue, and so it becomes dog-specific or breed-specific. So they may not be rescues that she uses all the time, but, you know, I know one, there was one in Phoenix recently that she ended up having to figure out how...
Beagle Rescue.
We gotta get this dog there. But you'd be surprised, the unique animals that come through there. I'm sure you could see on the paperwork, a rabbit, really? It's not like a jackrabbit.
They'd get rabbits.
Like a show rabbit, so I'm not sure where that thing came from, but they didn't just pop up on the street, you know? Something had to have happened where it was either released or got loose or...
And nobody came looking for it.
It's like, did they put, the owners put it out?
So we now have a microchipped rabbit. Never done that before, but we have a microchipped rabbit. And also, you can see on our numbers what we're doing. I know a lot of times, y'all see our call sheets and, but not what happened with that call. So I did go through our, our numbers from January to June, and you have that. So far this year, I've picked up 328 animals, and that's just in the city limits. So of those, 328, only 20 animals have either died or been put down in our facility. And 11 of those were owner surrenders for euthanasia, whether it be for medical reasons, quality of life for the animal. And that's, so only nine have actually been put down in the facility for any other reason, which can be, some of the, like, I had a kitten that passed away before we could even get it to the vet. It just, it was too far gone when we got it. But we did have a vet plan that just didn't make it, so it's considered a loss on our end, even though we had nothing that, there was no way of us preventing that. So I have put down several that have come in from dog bite cases, even though, I mean, it may not be an aggressive dog bite, but the dog still has bite history, and I don't feel comfortable putting that back out into a home, and if it happens again, I just, I don't feel comfortable with that. So a lot of times, that's the reason that they're put down in the facility. But we have not euthanized a single adoptable pet in our shelter in 12 months straight. So, but we are picking them up, it's just most of them we're shipping out and some we're adopting out. So that'll give you a little bit of, a little bit of more information than just that call sheet.
Any questions for Ms. Kristy? Like I said, you'd be surprised, some of the unique breeds are what gets left at the door. You'd be real surprised, and those stories will come to you at a later time, but see how it turns out. All right, thank y'all. Mayor, Council, Lisa Terrango, Chief of Police. What you'll see before you is examples, I know last time we talked about the noise level ordinance. These are kind of some examples of what you'll see as far as noise levels and what it can be. Understand, that's something that you may be standing in front of at that moment, it's not something that would be across the street or a couple of blocks down. And so the train whistle is one that I'm gonna use as far as the decimal level of that, and the train's a couple of blocks away from you, and you can see how loud that would be. And so I know we discussed times and maybe asking that the level of music or noise gets lowered with the time of the evening into the nighttime. And without taking you outside and showing you a decimal meter and watching traffic go by or hearing, you know, the business across the street, I can't give you more of an example other than just what's on paper unless you wanna go stand outside and I'll throw it up and you can kinda watch. Because even talking like I am now, it would register a level. The trucks passing by, that registers a level. And so a lot of times, the bass coming out of a music establishment, it's more of the vibration that you feel, not so much maybe the noise that you hear that's probably the most distracting is the bass level. And those are things that I have talked with the complain about, it's, it's more of the bass and it's more of the vibration and, you know, but the, as far as the decimal goes, it's never gone past 70.
Well, and then the other thing is with a truck or train, you know it's gonna end.
Yes.
But with the music, it's feeding and just keeps on and on and on.
Yes.
So there's a difference.
Very much so.
Yeah. So it might not be so much the decimal, it's just...
Sure, and the vibration of, of some of that, you know, with time.
Yeah, your bass sound is a lower frequency and that's why, it's louder than higher frequency. And, you know, myself, as I've lost my, some of my hearing, it's a higher frequency and a lot, but I can hear everything, the maze and all that, I can hear it. So one hour, one hour ordinance here, what is the max? Eighty-five?
So the max is, is where we have as far as, anything above that's gonna be like a disorderly conduct, and I, I think Mr. Johnson can explain a little bit. DOC exceeds 85 decibels, in other words, disorderly conduct, where we would write a citation for a state offense, not a city ordinance. Now what we're looking is between 60 and 80 decibels at certain times of certain days, and certain times, of course, at the night, and there's daytime one, there's nighttime one. Could that change? Yes, you have people that were at nights that sleep during the day, you know, they could be just as alarmed by that type of noise going on as well. And what my question is, you know, for the council, is if we're gonna continue to develop down here, I think we need to, to figure out what's gonna be the appropriate decimal reading that we're gonna allow. What's the ordinance need to read where every year or every few months, you guys don't have to be changing this to accommodate, whether it's a business or a residential area? And down here, you have the mixture of business and residential together.
Yeah, and if we...
Yes.
We build more in here, it's gonna bring even more.
It is.
Well, that's where we have to, in a kinda way, to be balanced in our, you know, I was looking at the other part of the agenda where it's, like, in commercial form, where it's 80 decimals during the day, but at night, it's seven. So, and then looking at, still, seventy's still loud, it's a hard one.
It is, yes, sir.
Or like some of these vehicles now have the glass, but we got a lot of trucks in here.
We got a lot of trucks in here, we can't...
And, and the trucks are 80, maybe just so...
And I even sat outside of the PD one day, just looking at the interstate traffic passing by to see as far as the semis passing, and, you know, they were between, say, 79 and 85, right in there. Of course, like you say, it's gonna end, it's going by quickly, and it's gonna stop, not something that's consistent noise that you're gonna hear. Understood. And I do like the idea of having it somewhere on, outside of a business where you can, if you walk by, you can look up and say, you know, it's, it's at the level or below where we want it to be. And the difference between us and, say, the Fort Worth district that you're talking about, that's a commercial district that, where they're having that, and here, we have the mix, commercial and residential together. And I think that's what makes it difficult. I do understand the idea, like, hey, back here, you know, on Oak Street, there are apartments above these businesses, that I know, we haven't got noise complaints from them, but, I mean, there could be a different...
And that's their choice.
That's their choice, and, and there may be other reasons, you know, some people may sleep with their...
Like, if you develop downtown the way it was, it'd be planned.
Yes, sir.
You know, is that just the way it's gonna be? We can't, we can't, and just not have business. And it's everywhere, you know, this is the same way, you know, it's wherever there's a commercial property and that's zone for that, that, you know, we can't stop anybody from. And, and me personally, in this town, I wanted to grow. I want, I want what's coming into the town, I wanna hold it back, and I'm not, because if it already been held back too many years, and here's an opportunity, we got to build, and downtown needs to be rebuilt anyway compared to what it was back in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. It was great, you know, and we didn't have hubs or anything like that at that time, but we have plenty of cantina all down 3rd Street.
Yes, we did.
I remember that. We left, we left right there on 2nd Street, and the Alamo Cafe, boy, the music wrote it. But, you know, it's, it's just the nature of the growth that we're getting. And I guarantee you, this ain't not gonna be the only place that we've sold, so we're gonna get it again.
And I think that to adhere to citizens' complaints as well as business, I think that there's a way to find a, like, a happy, you know, a medium there. Yes, sir, the ordinance, you should have a copy of the ordinance. This is, yes, sir. And it'll show the specifics.
It's not printed copy. It's not printed copy, Councilman Rick.
No, it's on the computer.
Heard about Walmart and Randy.
But I was wondering if he is part of this second one.
Yes, he is, that's correct. If that's what the council sees fit, you know, if there's like a, maybe a, a meet in the middle that, that can be done to accommodate both business and, as well as the residents. Because some of these locations that were once not a bar and grill or a place where there's music have been other businesses, been nothing where there's like a lot of music or a lot of, you know, stuff going on. I do agree that there's going to be more that comes in. So why, if we can figure out, you know, a compromise for, to make businesses content as well as, as your citizens. If there's some sort of sound barriers, I, I don't, I'm not much on knowing that kind of... I think like what you're saying, if it's a new build, that's one thing. If it's a building that's already here, you know, like the Trailways has tried to accommodate and put a ways to, put some sort of sound... Sure.
I'm pretty hesitant to require them to, if they're off too, that's great, but ultimately in the course of enforcement, we're, we're relying on their measurements. We're using our own, we have our own officers measuring and testing. Maybe can be able to force them to go on, but I think it's still a kind of gray area where they're not necessarily going to push them.
But you know, we talk about people that live upstairs, probably downstairs.
Sure. Understood.
We're not saying we have to be careful with it. We've put so many restrictions, we're not going to have any, any business that's coming in. We've got to be careful with that because we don't want to restrict too much. And then, and then we lose out on the opportunities of, of coming in.
Totally understand. They've been understanding. Because I went back, asked patrol, like, tell me the reasons. And that was the consensus, nothing has gone over, over that.
So about right now, the ordinance is eighty-five, right?
The ordinance shows that over the eighty-five, which is state law, then that's when they can decide for disorderly conduct.
But looking at this one, it says, non-residential mixed use zoning. Or let's say that, the paper sculpture district, from item C.
Yes, sir.
It said on Sunday through Thursday, daylight, seven, seven to ten, seven AM to ten PM the day, and then at nighttime from ten to seven, only seven.
Yes, sir.
And as for the cultural districts, which is, this is what we're developing.
Yes, sir.
So this is what it is now?
No.
This is what the proposal is.
So because we're just now working on this cultural district is why you see that language put in?
I kind of like that, like that, because it kind of, it doesn't completely take it way, way out of whack. Because ten, ten decibels go from, according to this, do you go from loud to very loud to loud. But at night, you want loud sounds, a lot because everything else requires it.
Plus the, the length of time that it's running, I think is, is a big part of it. Because the examples I gave you, those are things that are passing, so to speak.
Sure.
And it's not, if you listen to it, say, for an hour after a while, it's like, okay, this is really, yes.
Those ordinance reads also, those limits have been established, established at the maximum, which is any, go as considered volume, intensity, variation, reasons which is going to be a case-by-case basis of supply, that's a label like this.
Right.
It can still be under the cap, it can still be unreasonable, it can still be sizable. That comes down to, for the judge, Terry, to prove it.
It's, it's the same, it's just kind of showing you a scale of where it's going to go. So you can see these are by ten different ones, these go by five. So it's just going at a different level, like seventy, and then you can look over here and then seventy-five over here. And these are just examples of, you know, what you could find as far as the noise goes. Because I think you'll even find a loud restaurant in there. And if you've ever been in a loud restaurant, everybody's talking in lines, the decibels are, it's higher. And with a certain length of time, even more so. And then you throw in the music in a restaurant, you got, it can get loud.
Well, this ordinance says all residential, all non-residential mixed zoning, mixed use zoning, and then the bigger culture district. This is what we're proposing, right?
Yes, sir. And the residential, because here in Pickles, I see it a lot, where they may have a weekend party in their backyard.
Yeah, in the backyard.
Yeah. Or we may block off a certain block if they put in an application. And that's why you'll see some of the residential stuff in here, because we do have block parties, if you will, that put in an application with the city to...
Well, you know, we've beaten this dog quite, quite a few times. So if this is the ordinance, let's just go ahead and, and, I mean, it's going from eighty to seventy, well, and residential from seventy to sixty, non-residential from eighty to seventy, the district from, the cultural district from eighty to seventy.
During certain times, certain days, yes, sir.
Yeah, so.
Is there any more questions? I mean, some motion, we...
I have a motion for Councilman Saldana, and second for Councilman Ray. Should you approve the ordinance twenty-five dash oh seven, oh three? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The record showed the motion carries. The Councilman, a lot of voting. For item F three, discuss consider resolution twenty-five dash oh seven, dash oh two R. For resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Texas Municipal Department of Purchase and Water Department in the amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. Goal seven, enhanced Pegas infrastructure network, helping Richmond.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Kelvin Regis, Director of Public Works. The resolution that you see in front of you is for a jet or trailer. It's in addition to the one that we already have. We've run into situations where we, we'd be in better position if we had more than one. It just kind of gives us a backup, and this is a budgeted item as well. A jet or trailer is how we pump the water out. So for example, if there's a leak, when that hole fills up with water is what we use to pump the water out so that we can see the leak to fix it properly. So it's almost like a shop vac, you know, it removes the water so we can see it. But like I said, once that hole fills up with water, it's difficult to fix that leak if you can't actually see the pipe itself.
I have a motion for Councilman Saldana, and second for Councilman Saldana to approve resolution twenty-five, dash oh seven, dash fifty-two R. For resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Texas Municipal Department of Purchase and Water Department in the amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. Goal seven, enhanced Pegas infrastructure network, helping Richmond.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Kelvin Regis, Director of Public Works. The resolution that you see in front of you is for a jet or trailer. It's in addition to the one that we already have. We've run into situations where we, we'd be in better position if we had more than one. It just kind of gives us a backup, and this is a budgeted item as well. Jet or trailer is how we pump the water out. So for example, if there's a leak, when that hole fills up with water is what we use to pump the water out so that we can see the leak to fix it properly. So it's almost like a shop vac, you know, it removes the water so we can see it. But like I said, once that hole fills up with water, it's difficult to fix that leak if you can't actually see the pipe itself.
I have a motion for Councilman Saldana, and second for Councilman Marona, to approve resolution twenty-five, dash oh seven, dash oh two R. Is presented. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. For item F five, discuss consider ratifying the approval of a water pump line permit agreement with three R Park and Ranch LLC located on property legally described as being six-hundred-and-fifty acre tryout plan in section three, block five, A four twenty-three, H and G and Railroad Company survey Reeves County reflected on the plan attached here into exhibit A, strategic goal seven, enhanced Pegas infrastructure network, helping Richmond.
Mayor, Council, Kelvin Regis, Director of Public Works. The agreement that we're speaking of, it's in reference to our wastewater treatment plant. There's an old AC clay line that needs to be replaced. It's in really bad shape. If it were to break or fail on us, it's going to cause a major problem for the McKinnys and also the city. So this is in reference to replace that clay line. No, it's on their property, it's on Mr. McKinnon's property, Clay McKinnon. So we have to enter into an agreement to have the right of way to be able to replace it.
Is this a clay, clay line?
AC clay line, yes, sir.
I have a motion for Councilman Graham, and second for Councilman Saldana, to approve ratifying approval for a water pump line permit agreement with three R Park and Ranch LLC is presented. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. And six, second for Councilman Graham, approving an E two agreement with the Pegas Southern Railroad Company across along section seventeen, oh five, HTP Railroad Company, and exit as from, is in HTP public works.
And I was okay with it, Parker. But if you notice, I didn't leave you, man. I stayed right here.
Kevin said this to me to review. Spoke to him about it, spoke to Chad about it. It looks like we're looking to fix up the lines, not anything, contract number seventeen. So this is, you know, a...
And this is in reference to the water improvement plan. So this is also there to help us with the improvement for the fire hydrant, and that's looping in those lines and also fixing the underside lines as well. So this is in reference to that.
They, they agreed to, called a license agreement, they agreed to that fifteen-year term, and I went through the terms. The only thing we changed, I think, was in the event of a dispute, that then it was not Reeves County as opposed to Fair County, they didn't agree to that modification, otherwise everything there's okay.
I don't remember them having to pay the shit. There's no, okay. That's what I thought, I didn't see any dollar on that.
No compensation.
That would have stuck out to me, worth money in the mall.
How much, how much pipe are we? You're going under the railroad track?
Yes.
I think when we spoke with Chad, he said it was two lines that were both pretty small and, and he's thinking of being able to issue it all to go underneath without...
Yeah, he's thinking that if we just board, we'll be fine. But we needed to contact the railroad company before we made the decision to go in.
Are we going with the same size line?
No, absolutely not.
It's smaller, but what's that, I can't write something?
Yes. I don't remember the exact size of line, do you?
I can speak to this.
Absolutely, come on up.
Sorry, Randy Schaefer, I was spectating, I didn't dress appropriately to address the council, I apologize. But I, I represent the WTC, so I work for Chad. The, the two lines that are, that are going under the railroad tracks are part of the Wellfield Expansion Project, and this is part of connecting the pressure plane from the south side of the tracks to the north side of the tracks. So you have the ability to either isolate or interconnect those two so that either the tower to the north or the tower to the south can help maintain pressure there. And these, from memory, these are twelve-inch lines that are going under the tracks, and these are new installations. So it's not replacing old lines, it's, it's installing new facilities under the tracks. So I hope that answers your question.
Same, same rideaway?
They're two different, two different rideaways, same agreement.
Okay. What kind of, what kind of material, poly or...
These will be, in that area, it's PVC. HTP is, is all the stuff to the south, I believe this is PVC. If, it could be HTP, I, I don't recall from memory, I should have looked that up before I came.
Should we write it for, for...
Yes, sir. That's great, yeah. The winning contractor was Sky Blue. I, I would, I'd feel certain they'd have a subcontractor that does that boring for them. They may have their own boring machine, but I don't know the answer to that question right now. We, the loan, the USDA loan closes August twenty-first, then we'll have the pre-construction meetings that afternoon for all four scopes of work on that project, and so we'll know a little bit more about who's doing that work. But Sky Blue, an established contractor to do that installation, is going to be doing that work. Other questions?
Mayor, Council, in your packets, you'll find five different applicants for the hot board. We have advertised this for a total of four weeks on the newspaper, on our social media pages, and of course, our city website. We have received these four, five applicants. On the bylaws, it does state, the board consists of the mayor, who is non-voting, one council member who is also non-voting, three hotel motel representatives, two, two hotel motel representatives, four local business, three local business representatives, preferably hospitality industry, and two alternates. preferably hospitality industry, and two alternates. The applicants who have, we have received do not fulfill the needed requirements. On the bylaws, it doesn't state anything about waiving that or anyone else can serve the board. So, it would be up to the city council to appoint these. I'm sorry?
The organization to be filled is from the hotel motel. Yes, the hotel motel. Well, this, I mean, the bylaws specifically says hotel motel.
We can, unless you would like to motion towards that, and we can amend the bylaws. That is also an option. Yes, the advertisement that was put in the newspaper included those requirements as well as our social media posts.
But, it didn't say what position. But, I looked at it today, so it didn't say we're specifically looking for somebody in the hotel motel.
The newspaper article or?
I don't think it did.
It did.
It had the requirements that, that who's on the board, but it didn't specifically say we're looking for somebody in the hotel motel.
I can look back at it, but I'm most certain that the little section you see on the hot board information was in, placed in the newspaper article.
Yeah, and looking at the name, I know three of them. Yes, I know three of them. And two of them, I don't know, but I was looking at their, at their paper as I turned in. None of these are, if you were going by, by that, none of them, none of them called a board. But, this, three of these are, first of all, candidates.
Three of them currently serve on other boards. So, we, this is only replacing one?
Yeah.
It was current. Yes, and they're normally, once their terms expire, we reach out to them, letting them know about two months before, and normally, they will resubmit.
We have a motion from Councilman Marona, second from Councilman Salonia, to re-approach this position. At this time, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. I have an item F eight, discuss consider the appointment of two board members to the planning and zoning board, board adjustments, hold five, open, and consistent.
Mayor and Council, again, on this one, you will only find one applicant. We are needing to fill two. We do have an alternate that is able to move up, if that is what you desire, and appointing the applicant. Lupe Davis.
Does this one, this planet and all need? Is there any specifications that, like what we just did, attack?
It's, of course, it's the same for all of them. We have a requirement of at least one year resident in the city limits.
But, she's already an alternate.
Yes. So, you would motion for Lupe to move up as a board member? And Crystal Luhan to serve as an alternate? Crystal.
Right now, it says there's only one vacancy. Yeah.
We have a vacancy for an alternate.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you can restart your motion.
Okay, no, okay, let me get this straight. One vacancy between, one vacancy for an alternate.
Correct.
Lupe Davis is already an alternate.
She is. She has the opportunity.
She can't make it.
Well, I've got to read, start my motion.
Crystal Luhan.
So, we have a motion from Councilman Marona, second from Councilman Graham, to move Lupe Davis up to board and appoint Crystal Luhan as an alternate. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So, we're still looking for an alternate in the planning zone.
Yes, and we will need to, we will need to re-advertise her.
Okay, item F nine, discuss consider the appointment of one board member to the tax agreement with three investment funds, all one single, I can tell, as many.
Yes, on our tourist board, we had one board member resign from serving, which opened up a position. On those, you will see that the board members serving are tiered, and we did have only one applicant, and we are only needing to fill one position.
What's on, on this one? Being that it's a, a tourist, kind of to do with taxes and money and stuff like that. I think we had talked about this earlier, because I usually come to this board to listen to it. But, I thought we were going to do, because of the, we were zoning, that we were going to ask entities to provide representation. I know, I know we got a hospital, county.
ESD one and two. And the school district.
Okay, good, good. I can't see the ones on the bottom.
Yes, so the positions one through seven are reserved for the city, for the city council to appoint. Seven through fifteen is for the entities who would like to join them.
One other thing that we talked about too, we don't want to put the same people in too many boards either, because that's where information is supposed to be on this board and be communicated to the other board or other things. So, there's only one applicant, right?
There is.
I like, like what we did with the other one, to put it back out, and let's see if we get somebody else.
Okay.
To change, we already applied that other applicant that is here to the board before, before this.
But, then if you see that, so you're going to counteract that, because you have a Davis that's also a board member on the, on this board, and you just moved her up to the other board.
Yeah, that's right. So, that's something that we, you definitely need to look, especially if this, this board is not great. But, I like to put, repulse.
You just appointed her for the alternate as upon and zoning.
What's hers, what's her? I don't know the name.
So, on with the applicant, you'll see that she has filled it out, and she's given information that she is an employee at the Reeves Regional.
That was just my, my opinion, so whatever you guys, you know, improve.
So, this position shows it expires in July twenty-five, so that would be starting time then.
And since Lupe is already in the other board here, she's facing her terms expires.
November.
In November.
November. And then we'll do it again. Not, not, not with her. Right, because if you look down, you got three, two of them coming up in December. But, we're going to be changing this board totally, totally around, and this is what we're going to, this is what we need more people in to be getting there. And I kind of like what, what they did, you know, the entities are involved, because they're the ones that are going to be running or basically making, making requests for this thing.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilman Marona, second from Councilman Graham, to approve the appointment of Crystal Luhan to the tourist board. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F eight, discuss consider, funding request from the town and city for the allocation of funding for Discover America, Great Places to Live, and the Department of State, someone.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager. This is one of the ones that I talked to a few of y'all last time, just to give you a general idea. We did take it through the hot committee on Tuesday, I think Tuesday, Monday. Monday. And this is that one that I talked to about that's a few point with Dennis Quaid, and it pertains to a segment that they want to do related to Discover America, Great Places to Live, Visit and Start a Business segment. And the committee did approve the funding related to that. The total funding is twenty-nine, about twenty-nine thousand dollars. All of the video that is created by their crew when they come down here is, becomes the property of the city, and it will be featured on multiple, they have a relationship with PBS, but it's on multiple news networks. It will be done in the evening hours where most of the viewers are watching. So, from that standpoint, with the, with the approval from the hot committee, I would like to ask you all to go ahead and approve this, and we can get it going. No, I think, I think what they'll, what they're looking for when they do that, just to give you all a little insight, we're going to look for multiple people and especially people that are, a lot of people that are native to Pecos that can talk about all of the great things that we do have to offer here and stuff like that. So, there'll probably be a montage of multiple people. Now, we'll be condensed and put them down into a shortened segment, so. Yes, Parker?
I have a motion on, or you have a second? I have a motion from Councilman Graham, second from Councilman Marona, to approve the funding request for the Discover America. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Item F eleven, discuss consider entry into the tax payment, a banking agreement with HTP contractors for development as the work of the property described as the integral of the power block at block forty-four, original Pegas clause.
Mayor, what I'm going to ask is if we can open up the public comment period so that if there's anybody that wants to speak on this for the next three minutes, that we can do that. And I didn't bring my phone, so you're going to have to tell me what time. Yes, Mayor? Wendy, do we have a signed copy of that? Are you talking, the signature from me or from?
From you.
Oh. We can, we can, we can postpone this until there is a signature on that. I can tell you that I think Hector will be out for the next few weeks. I think he was getting married and going out of country. But, it's the choice of council. If we want to do it until we get the signatures, I'm totally fine with that. Yeah, yeah, I don't want to approve something that we, is not fully executed. This is a modification to the payment that you already gave me. He's requested, he's requested, yeah, he requested a longer term and with a trailing amount. He's, he's asking now for a ten-year that's going to go from ten down to fifty percent over the ten years.
Mayor and Council, in this section above on the applicant, application, you'll read where, upon submission of a completed application to a representative of the city manager's office, will renew the application and contact the applicant as necessary to move forward with the application. It may be why we're missing the signature from him. He may not want to dismount until they have the.
But, to me, if you're applying, you need to sign your paperwork.
I would. Then, Mayor, with that being said, if it's not going to move forward, then I'd say that we have to, do we have to still leave the public hearing open?
Yes.
We have to until the three minutes. All right.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Orona, a second from Councilwoman Correa, the stakeholders, Adam. All those investors say aye. Any opposed? Okay. So the motion carries and Councilwoman Orona's petition. On the high of F twelve, this discussion is authorized by the city manager and city manager. Then negotiate the term of our private, public, private partnership with the community for the development of multiple letters to future partners.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, this is something that I've been having a conversation with the hearing group, and this is going to be more of a discussion. And then you all, the considerers, to give me, get Parker and I the authority to start working on trying to put together a public-private partnership. Right now, and we have some representatives from there that I'll let them speak, because they're much more well-versed on it than I am. But there's some water that is available. Right now, we have our own water supply, and we will have our new water supply, which is good. But I'm looking, right now, in the state of Texas, water is becoming a very scarce commodity. And in my conversations with Mr. Nance and the landowner, we want, we are... My proposal to them that I would like to do is I'd like to become the... Have the city, not me, but the city become the water magnet or magnate, I'll say it that way, as the king for the entire region. To where we can run it through our current systems and we could sell that water to the other communities that need it. With them, at the rate that they're doing with the city, being, getting, receiving a royalty on it of probably as small or smaller than a quarter of a cent. And it would provide us with, you know, some revenue that we can do. We would do the billing for some of it, but we would recover cost plus have a sustainable revenue source for the community for a long time. Water's never going to go, I mean, water's forever. So as long as we can keep that source available and be able to, you know, be the middleman on it in essence and work with, through a public-private partnership, I think it could be a revenue stream for the city for years to come. And it would also put us in a position to where nobody would, could come attack for getting any of the stuff that we need. But with that being said, our citizens with the new well field that we have are going to have their water supply. This would be a secondary one that would come in that we could resell. So that's what, again, you all ask me sometimes to think outside the boxes. This thing, you're not way outside the box. So I'm going to, if I can, I will go ahead and have Lyndon come up, and he can introduce you, give you a little bit more insight and talk a little bit more about what we're talking about.
I had a presentation, but I got it killed too. Essentially, the city currently has about 12,000 population base, and you're using about roughly 2 million gallons of water a day. And I wasn't aware of y'all's new well fields. Congratulations. But the, previously before the new well field was approved, the city had a study done, and y'all had enough water to add about 8,000 more residents, and you'd still have water for the next 50 years with that population base. So all of my study was based upon that older information, so I need to get updated on those new sources. But even with that 8,000 base, that puts you at about 3.5 million gallons of water a day totaled to liberal water. And from the media that we've received from the power plant development side, we've been getting a lot of calls from different industries, primarily a lot of data centers have been interested in trying to move out here. Their biggest question after, right after power is water. Where's water coming from? How much do y'all have available? We fielded four calls from four different groups. I've talked to Mr. Dutch over here about it. And the smallest one was asking for 3 million gallons a day, and the largest one was asking for 7 million gallons a day. And that, yeah, so we have to bring in more water if the city's going to grow more industries, which... As I told you from the get-go, I'm trying to help the city as much as I can to try to bring in more industry other than just oil field. So we're looking at trying to develop a water system that brings water in that's not fresh water, right? So brackish water. We've identified 20 million gallons of water a day production right now. And they're already producing it, and they've got approval from TCQ to just pump it into the Pecos River. So we want to, instead of pumping it in the river and having it become state property, we want to capture it and build a line to Pecos. And then I'd actually like it to be a three-way partnership between ourselves and the city and the county. Because the county wants to take water up to Orla, to the fire station and man camps up there. And that's more of a public health issue up there, because they're trucking water in. And it's extremely difficult to protect the public health on, when you're operating from that side. So if we build the line all the way up to Orla, then we can build a centralized treatment plant up there and then do local chemical, chlorine treatment and then distribution lines. So it'd be essentially an extension almost of the city's operations up there. And so that's part of the negotiations, is I don't know if the city wants to try to take over management of a water field in Orla or not. I know that's part of the county's request is, is we go that route. The way I would like to build it out is build a, essentially a main trunk line coming up. We were looking at a 42-inch line of HTP-E. We should be able to pressure it up to about 100 PSI. And at that volume and that diameter, we should be able to move roughly 20 million gallons of water a day through that pipeline. HTP's nice, because it saves you money in the long run on operations, because you don't have to put diodes on it, those zinc diodes. Because the soils out here will corrode steel pipe very quickly. Plus, running salt water through it will do the same thing. But you can't go as high a pressure on it. So if we, or when in the future we need more demand, we can safely take it up to about 200 PSI, is the quotes I've received. And there's different types of pipe that we can look into where they're reinforced more on the inside. But you're talking a much higher price once you start going into the more exotic types of construction. The total build-out, if we do a 42-inch line all the way up to the city, and then just depending if we continue a raw line all the way up to Orla, 42-inch or take it down to 24-inch, that's, your pipeline's going to be primarily your largest expense on this project. And then I would propose building out the water treatment plants in stages, instead of trying to say we're going to build, you know, a 20 million gallon a day plant. I believe the city right now has demand for 2 million gallons. And then up in Orla, they range between 4 and 6 million gallons. So I was thinking if we built a 5 million gallon a day plant here and a 5 million gallon a day plant up there, and then we could just build extra storage in Orla itself, that would cover that region. I'm not sure if the city would want more storage here as well. But it's kind of just trying to wrap everything up into one big project, so cover everybody's wishes all the way around. And then if, if and when more industry moves in, if there's need for more treated water, then we could add, you know, add another 5 million gallon a day train right inside the previous one. Another benefit of partnering with the county is they have, I believe it's a 100-acre tract right across the river, and there's a saltwater disposal well that they have sited there. Part of the water treatment plant side is, depending on the total dissolved solids that are in the water, how much gunk you have floating in it, right? So saltwater has salt and maybe chlorine and everything, or not chlorine, but calcium, magnesium, potassium. When you run that through the membranes, you have to eventually backwash it to keep your treatment flowing through. And so depending on which engineer you talk to, they'll tell you it'll be between a 20 and 40 percent backwash of waste water that you have to dispose of. And so that's, the disposal side would become another huge expense of the treatment plant itself. So typically, it's electricity and disposal water are your two biggest expenses of a reverse osmosis plant. So the county handles one of those, and then we can definitely help out on the power side. So I believe we can get the power down to about 3 cents a kilowatt. It should be a very efficiently run plant with, and we estimate it about... I believe we're sitting at about five megawatts of demand on it. So it's not a real large power plant that'd have to be built for each train. So the total project cost with the right-of-way acquisitions and pipelines and everything, we were looking at about 200, 250 million investment on it, so... And then so that's also where partnering with the city and the county comes into play, is we can get private money on it, but the local governments have access to Texas Water Development Board funds. And as far as going after loan, that's the cheapest money you're going to find anywhere. That's zero to 3 percent interest on a 50-year note. So it makes a lot more sense doing that than going after 8 to 10 percent interest on private money.
What place your secondary source of water?
Sir?
Secondary source of water?
Down by Imperial, Texas, right now. That's where they have, they're currently producing 20 million gallons of water a day. And the landowner's here with us today as well.
We're actually dumping it into the Pecos River right now. We've got TCQ approval to dump it. Our water's sweeter than the water's in the Pecos River.
It's about...
It's a little bit better water. Our water's actually, the fish are actually breathing down there. And the deer are drinking the water, so it's good.
It's roughly half of saltwater. The sea is at about 30,000 perch per million. This is about 13,000. So groundwater?
No wells at all.
Free-flowing. So part of, part of our process of this also is we have to get TCQ approval of the site to be approved as a drinking water source. So we've had conversations with them already on it. They said they think, because it's such a large pit, that they believe they can get it done within about two months. We can't even begin that process until we have permission from the city to, that yes, y'all are interested in moving forward on something along these lines.
We have a lot of water. We're in the mining business, so we're mining the, you know, we're mining the rock and the aggregates. And by doing that, we're making the water, and that's where the water's coming from.
It's just free-flowing out, and they're pumping out to keep the...
They get the head pressure 15 feet. If we don't pump it into the river, we've got two 11 million barrel pits, literally. If you don't pump it in the river, your equipment is underwater on Monday morning. Yeah, it's pretty, it's the head pressures, I believe.
Very impressive location to go. Down by Imperial, Imperial Grand Falls.
Yeah, Imperial, Grand, Grisham, and then we have water all the way up to the Grand Falls.
No, north of the river. What we'd like to do is build a line from their two main pits and connect both of those. And then their most western pit is about 10 miles from the, from the city's current well field. And so we'd like to run 42-inch line all the way up to the existing well field in Washington? And then piggyback on the city's existing water even and lay the line through there. That would save the project a bunch of money if we can do that. And then build the plant itself over on the east side town. Just that way, we don't have to lay a bunch of line through town or, you know, the saltwater disposal line as well, going to the county as well.
The only reason it's true is because it has some salt.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Salt only.
I've already run the water samples, and I had the Texas Drinking Water Standards is what I asked them to test it for. So no arsenic, no, no other chemicals that would be hazardous to you, you know? Just your standard ground minerals. But they're just elevated levels of it, so we have to clean that up, and then it's good water.
With that vast amount of water out there, if somebody needs to make a buck off of it, and they're just dumping it into the Pecos River, I don't see, I don't see why we shouldn't give the city manager, attorney, a chance to know about your issue, but we can come up with...
TCQ wouldn't let you put it in the river if there was plenty.
Part of...
We don't have no muscle with all that crap.
That's the beautiful thing of it being from a materials pit, is that it's, it's not from the oil field. It's not, you know, there's no other chemicals that are involved in it. So the arsenic levels were the biggest concerns of, you know, sometimes you just have it naturally producing, and there's none of that in it, so...
Clay, you had drill wells. We are not drilling any wells. We're in the mining business. We mine aggregates, and it produces water. We sell them. Yeah, we're, BB Materials, we're a big company. Pardon me? Yes, Bavin', we supply, we supply everybody around here, basically.
I want you to give us, give Parker and I the authority to negotiate and work on a public-private partnership to get this project moving, so that we can formalize it, so that we have all of the i's dotted and the t's crossed to make sure that we're protecting the city and building a business venture. And I mean, I just see it as able to generate residual income for the city that otherwise is going to be just left to the private sector or to others. And by partnering this way, we can use some of the benefits that we are, that we and the county have as a government entity to leverage and reduce costs. But if we can become the big player, I mean, there's, I mean, we can take care of Reeves County first, but at some point in time, it may be built big enough to where we can take care of others too. I think, I think we start from the beginning, Art. And the main reason is because the county has a significant need to the north. And if we can collaborate and coordinate it, it means that we can save money by designing the entire system upfront instead of trying to piecemeal it. And I think it could be great for both entities that way.
So if we work with the county, they have the ability to run it within Texas right away. So the only thing that we'd have to do is if Texas ever expands, we'd have to move, it'd be on our dime to move the pipeline with the... It's possible. They do, yes, sir. I've heard of it, I just hadn't heard that they had put out a schedule yet for it, so...
It's not scheduled, but it's at the number one spot on the UTP right now, so that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, I think we actually have the design for that based on our...
So we, again, we'd like to build a, basically just a centralized location in Orla, where it would make the most sense to put in a treatment plant and then the chlorination system. And then you have your, you know, new localized distribution system and fire hydrants, everything else up there.
It can be good. Probably.
You could. It would be, I mean, if you wanted to make it a saltwater site, it would save a lot of money on chlorine.
It'd be like the ocean.
Well, so, another thing y'all might want to consider... I don't know if y'all have considered building out like a dedicated industrial park or anything, but some of the data centers were saying, you know, they don't want chlorinated water because it's an extra item that they have to take out before they can run it through. So, if there is a...
The raw water would be...
Yeah, we can still treat the raw water and run them a dedicated raw water line that can then be sold at a super price than what the city's drinking water would be going for. They would save the city a lot of money on chlorine and maintenance and upsizing your treatment water as well. So, y'all have the opportunity right now, you know, before a lot of industry or anything else moves in, you can plan ahead and have dedicated facilities for different operators.
Preempted.
From my construction concern about that, I highly recommend planning ahead on stuff like that. It makes life a lot easier in the future. That's all I have. I don't know if you had any more questions for me or...
I have a question. I have a subject that's...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And the vice president of the county, the governor, the captain, Selvanna, who has approved all the state agencies, trying to change for public park partnerships, they are hearing. As we will, all those people say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? So, the rest of the board is prepared. We'll go to aye. If they're saying aye on fire hazards and city dwellers, we'll go to aye.
It's not gonna go this year, but next year, yes, sir. I can... But I will put together some projections on that, absolutely.
What do you think it's gonna take from the T C Q? Because we have to get the supply approved as drinking water first. That'll be about two months. And then, the engineering has to be completed and submitted to T C Q. That takes about another six months. And then, we think we can build out the plant and the pipeline itself within about a year to a year and a half. So, it's still gonna be about a two-year...
Two years.
For fully operational.
Mayor and council, it also gives them an opportunity to figure out how we're going to work with the state with Senate Bill... Exactly what they did with the natural gas converting into electricity. So, that's the whole idea.
And Senator Perry is the one that was the advocate of that one.
My name is Ricky Gregory. Oh, hey, no.
It's been flowing for seven...
You would not believe how much water we got. It is insane. And we're gonna be a great partnership for you guys. Yeah, I can promise you that. I'm really looking forward to this.
I remember seeing... And the city's liability on model, you're a hundred and seventy. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Ladies.
Mayor, Council, Kelly, there is to do regular public work. So, I'm gonna have to lean on Parker for the liability piece of it. But just from the standpoint of giving you guys an update on where we are, right now, we're in the process of installing valves. And each one of those hydrants, once the valves are installed, then we'll begin replacing them tightly. And you guys have already approved those monies that have been awarded to Bono Company to replace those fire hydrants. So, once we're done installing valves, then we'll begin replacing actual hydrants.
How many did you tell them?
Twenty-one. Yes, ma'am.
The one that's just down is watching everything.
Yes, sir.
So, we're still...
Okay. Okay. We'll take care of it. Oh, they know exactly where you're speaking.
It's a homeboy process anyway.
I'm sorry?
It's a homeboy process of the...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir. There it is. It's on the list. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, is this gonna employ the ones that are being offered for right now?
Yes. All of the black ones are the ones that do not... Yes. Leaving as not black works.
I've got a thing. It's pretty difficult. And I believe that we've done replaced more than the first two hundred...
Three thousand.
If we kept asking these questions, constantly, it's in the works. I should process those. And we'll... We've asked him down more than I can mention.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So, from the liability piece, like I said, I gotta lean on Parker.
And for the liability piece, this is something that the city's gonna be immune from. Pretty much any governmental entity, you have immunity unless it's been waived. Texas Torque Claims Act will waive a bunch of immunity, which lets cities and counties be sued for all sorts of things. And expressly exempts fire protection from that. So, that would be something that the city still has immunity for. And in addition to that, there's case law. The people have still tried and failed, so the immunity holds up.
I'm in F 18, F 8, all personally, and here's a... I'm proud to look forward to more driving south, go off, and other things to communicate with your mother.
Something funny happen to you?
I was distracted by light. Two cars on the way. And then, they... I wanted to... I wanted to... It's just messy, but I think we can just start this thing out.
It's not gonna be a...
It's messy, but...
It's very easy. Because it looks like...
We're getting text on client. Because I got the... The two... The lights, you know, up, it's the north. And we just decided not to do it anymore. Of course, you do with the original client. Why don't you just call them?
So? So, I spoke with this person. I'm keeping all the... Channeling some good things.
I'll just...
Charles won't let me. So, I had an opportunity to speak with Nestor Mendoza, the Texas Otter Engineer. P posed this question to him the following couple of days after y'all discussed this. Because I know I've asked before to find out what's going on. Originally, we were told that they were not finished painting. They were gonna come back and finish painting. What he stated to me was that Texas did a study and it did not warrant a turning lane. I was like, okay, what are our options? I said, because... He goes, well, do you not know what your traffic laws are? You're not supposed to cross double lanes. Meaning that the lane that you're in, you could either go straight or take a left. But it is confusing to people who are seeing an open spot. And so, my response to that was, can we have a Chevron put inside this lane to identify the fact that it is not a turning lane? And that they can obviously turn from the original lane? Which I would think that an arrow with a left turn, an arrow facing forward and facing to the left will kinda curb this confusion, really. I mean, I've seen it in other cities where it obviously tells you. But I don't work for Texas. I'm not sure... Reason behind it short of what he stated to us. He did indicate that we can attach a drawing with the Chevron, Chevron in there, showing the Chevron placement. And he... It could be submitted by him and possibly added. My recommendation is to ask for a Chevron and the arrow, to have that arrow painted or ask them if we can paint it because we have the templates for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Not in the center. No, sir. And on the... Correct. So, if you look at that... If you look at that pork chop, as they call it, it's a double line. And traffic rule states you are not supposed to cross the double line.
But it's got a separate line. So, why do they do a separate line?
It is to break... It's actually... So, you know, it's just like Stafford and Eddie. That Chevron should be there to allow for the larger truck turning traffic going north. That's the purpose of it. That's why you don't have a turning lane on Country Cl... Um, I'm sorry, on Eddie and Stafford. It's the same process. So, delivery can, but when you have left-turning traffic, truck traffic or right-turning truck traffic going north, that is to accommodate that excess distance that they need to make that radius. Otherwise, if there's a turning lane there, the same situation on Stafford and Eddie. If there was a turning lane there and you had someone coming into Eddie Street going north, they could easily take out... And a good example is if you look on 285 at Third, how far back that turning lane actually is. And it's to accommodate the turning traffic, although that radius is much larger. My recommendation is to ask them if we could get a turning lane arrow showing that you can either go straight or take a left and create a Chevron in the center lane. Because, again, we may be creating a hazard there for turning traffic.
Or we move to another place to grab it, but we don't have...
It's a little bit narrow.
Yes. Yeah. I almost don't wanna ask them to do that.
You... If that's... Yeah, they have... They have...
They want it for that line.
I can mention that to him and let him know because I feel, you know, we have that also at 285 and I-20 over here. Well, again, you can actually turn there, but where are you going?
Are you going north? 285, overpass, and then you got the red. You know, and the trucks, you know, you gotta back up with the trucks.
Yes.
Well, it's like turn down here to the first street, to Seventeen, where they actually have curb to keep the curbs gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's actually probably referred to more as a pork chop than what I was saying. I was just identifying it, you know, the size. But, yeah. So, pulling their lead and recognizing that, yeah, it doesn't warrant... Traffic study did not warrant it. I think that also leads to the reason that maybe that extra lamp socket that was put there was meant if it did.
Yeah.
So, but I can ask them about that and see if this...
Is it not legal?
Yeah, see if it's something that they can update. And I believe that will help to lend or to reduce the confusion. But I agree. I mean, I would say Derek, it's just out if I wasn't familiar with the town. So, I guess I want some direction on if you're... If you want us to go ahead and...
Can we have a sign that says no left turn?
Actually, paint it. I mean, I could ask them if we could do that, but...
We would have to ask them.
I can. It is there. It's there right of way. The reason I'm offering that we do it is probably to expedite it. I've waited quite a while just to get this little bit of information. So, you know, I know that we put it out there several months back. So, I'm sure, you know, I appreciate that they're very busy, even more so now.
It's also a safety issue.
Yeah. And, you know, both times he came back to you, you know, the traffic law says you can cross. I get that.
Say that on a special one to make it faster. Cross the... Yellow whenever they're trying to pass it.
I understand that. And so, but...
You know, I... I guess... If that's not just outside man, you can do that. And block that, and make that...
So, we put Chevrons... If we put Chevrons in there, I think it clearly, you know...
Those are good.
Well, it's not a... It's not an area that you would pull into. Will people utilize it? They will do that. They will. But we can end it... We can put that there to help maybe identify where they should be. But I also think putting that sub-bound arrow and a left-bound arrow would also help in that single lane right there, you know, to identify that they can turn left and or go straight.
I just... I'm 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 just...
locks and whatever, and those are kind of...
And there are, and, and there was a, there were a couple that got, you know, actually for a couple of, of course, calls from the police. They had, it's a, a tiny cars, like, oh, we see, I don't know if you're driving, and I think, I think, I've been driving, I think, from a safety standpoint, you're great, I'm sure, the police department wouldn't have a problem, hallucination, you should operate more, and then, and there was any exception, I think, you look at it, we have, we have a significant volume of law enforcement, and so we try to police it, we have something through an ordinance, it makes it a little bit more reasonable to have a police, because right now we know it's true, so for us to tell them that, I don't know if we have the authority to do that.
And maybe add that as part of like an event application, if you're going to be part of that event, maybe even talk with the committee that arranges, things like the Royal Parade or whatever, they can add that into the application where it's understood from the very beginning and maybe we'll have this kind of issue.
Okay. So, you had a rapid... So, this time can it go to, to that, under government code PAA 1.071, 270, PAA 1.072, state, PAA 1.071, 1.076, PAA 1.077, 7.70.
Anything else to the next meeting? Okay, we are back at open session and it is 8:04 PM. Is there anything from the begging session that needs to be brought to the open? None? Okay. Uh, go to item I, discuss items from the next city council meeting.
Um, I would like to report the two of the discussions in the state of Idaho.
Yes.
Um, also, the gentleman that was here that spoke in public conference, uh, he was not supporting. And those, our commercial manager, probably suggested we use a lot for different songs to sign for different events. And what they have to kind of push.
And I know this is a little off topic, but with all the voting in the room, so they have asked if their, um, received awards can be a different signal for flashbulb than it is for their, um, award contest.
It used to be the link was the song that was written to them.
Correct, I know what you mean.
Exactly.
And, uh, I don't agree, Dave, with Victor Peña, what, uh, uh, I'm gonna bring that back up. If, if I could get him, he's back in town, okay? This is not gonna do any good to bring it back before I go ahead and say.
Yeah, so we need, I thought we, we would have, uh, you know, a vote, because that's what I would, yeah.
What we do, what we do, we will have a vote.
Yeah, but it's already been, it's a timeline and, and, uh, it's already started clearing, clearing the land and all that, really. And I want to be held, I want anything to be held back down, we just, uh, fear of, fear of it.
That thing is going on quick and we need to move and where the one holding it.
But, but still, these are the applications that are decided and that's not our.
No, no, I know that.
We're discussing, we're discussing.
Yeah, we can't, we won't have it on the next.
That one was on.
Yeah. He featured the fight card.
Anything else to the next meeting? Okay, and we're ready to enter, it is 8:06 PM.
The dog got a puppy!